Welcome to episode 16 of the Wheels and Beyond Podcast. I'm your host, Ben Durham. And today we have City of London Ward Six councillor Sam Trusso joining us as our guest. This episode was recorded on November 15th, 2024, and that is relevant because we are discussing Bill 212 and how it might affect things on a municipal level in the future. So now that we are in the future here in 2025, and this podcast episode is releasing, we now know that Bill 212 has since passed. And some of the points about the vagueness of Bill 212 that Sam brings up several times throughout this episode are huge predictors of the extra 11 pages that the provincial government added to the bill at the very last minute. So Sam has some very important insights because of his extensive background in law. With that in mind, let's jump into this progressively more drizzly, coolish autumn day, sitting on a bench outside of King's University College here in London, Canada.
First of all, thank you very much for interviewing me. I've been watching, I've been watching your postings with much interest. So I'm really, I'm really glad to be talking to you and your audience. My name is Sam Trusso. I moved to London in 2001 to take up a teaching position with the University of Western Ontario. I held a joint appointment in the Faculty of Law and in the Faculty of Information and Media Studies. I retired in December 2023. So I have a 22 year history at, at the university. And I've been very active since we got here in 2001. We've been very active in, in the community. And I've been involved in a number of municipal campaigns and initiatives at City Hall on developments in the environment and housing and a number of other things. And in 2022, I decided to run for city council and I was, I was successful. So here, here I am, the Ward Six councillor. And you asked, you asked me, where would be a nice place in my ward to just, to just sit and film? And I just, I just love coming to King's College because it's, it's very scenic here. Today is a beautiful day. It's, it's a crisp autumn day and it's, even though we're in the middle of the term, it's, it's very quiet here because we're still, I think we're, we're in the morning and there isn't a lot of lunchtime or evening activity. So this is just a wonderful place to sit. And I hope it, I hope at some point we can get some nice scenes of some of the beautiful buildings around here and we'll take a, we'll take a ride and you could see what this area is like. There's a lot of open space in this area. King's College is situated on, on the north side of Old North. We're, we're in what would be called Bruffdale, which is, which is a historic area that used to be, used to be not part of the city of London. Huron was the borderline between London proper and the village of Bruffdale. And, and certainly the King's College over the years has expanded quite a bit. This is, this is the new building that was not there. This is, this is refurbished. And I think the, the administration at King's has always been very sensitive to having their buildings like fit in with the existing environment. So it's a very pleasant place to come. We have shuttle buses right in front of King's that go through the university, past, past Huron, past what was Bresia, back, back through the campus. And it's a very, very, it's a very good way to get around this part, this part of the city.
Actually, you know what? I wasn't, this always seems to happen, but I wasn't going to ask about this, but seeing as you've been with the university, et cetera, for so long, do you happen to know anything about the architecture? Because something that I absolutely love about going through Western and biking through Western or anything else, or just being around here is just the architecture. It's so amazing.
I think that when you look at, when you look at the buildings around here, you could see that there's an attempt to emulate a much older style of architecture. And I remember the first day I laid eyes on the Western campus when I was here for my interview and I, I was just, I was just, I was just in awe at how beautiful the buildings were and how classic they were. Then I walked up to the, to the building I was walking into and it said 1955. So, you know, clearly this, this is not an old, it's not an old building, but there was a period of time, which I think is gone now, a period of time where the, the university did try to, did, did try to blend, blend in with a certain style of, of architecture. And, and now it's more about utility.
And have you heard about, so it's really nice to walk on campus, partially because of the architecture, but have you heard about the, the fact that like the utilitarianism of the architecture? So it's, it's meant for driving. So you don't have to pay attention to the details, just put it with glass and we're done. And meanwhile, there's all these details. You had mentioned the hall over there and like it resembles what I would call like French vibes, like old country, French house vibes.
European.
There we go. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I think that more and more the campus is just being totally overtaken by automobiles. While it is pleasant to walk on campus, it's, it's, it's increasingly perilous because they're just cars every place. And I don't, I don't believe that the university is really addressing the, the, the problem of emissions on campus and what to do, what to do with the car problem. There was another bridge that's going to be under construction and maybe we'll take a look at the bridge today. And that, that's a, that's a whole nother, that's a whole nother, whole nother interview. I would say all in all, I've heard a lot of complaints from cyclists who are trying to get to campus about how, how poorly designed the bicycle lanes are. And those are being improved and how there are certain pockets, Philip Aziz Road, the university bridge, that are, that are really dangerous for cyclists. Even though the bridge is, is posted, no passing, you, you can't, you can't cycle across the bridge without somebody trying to pass you. So I think more needs to be done in terms of trying to remove some of the traffic from campus, but again, that's, that's a whole nother discussion.
Exactly. That bridge is a pinch point and it's just uncomfortable because yeah, even if you're biking across, you're taking the lane, the drivers are just on your tail. They're like, get out of the way, I'm in a hurry. And then they race to the red light. I mean, that's almost.
Well, they're not going anywhere because once they get to the, once they get to the end of the bridge, they're just sitting there. And depending on what time of day it is, they're just going to sit in a long, long line of traffic.
Exactly. But it's always that.
So it's, it's nice that the speed limit has been reduced to 30, but many times of the day, you're not going to, you're not going to get above a crawl anyway.
Okay.
Yeah.
So now, now we covered Western and we have our gripes about it. It is very nice, but also could use some work. There's a lot of surface parking too. Oh my goodness. Anyways, which just spaces things out.
Some of the trucks that come in for things like donuts are just these huge, huge, I mean, these are not small delivery trucks. They're, they're, they're massive.
So one of the things that I know you really wanted to talk about, and I really want to talk about, and I want to get your insight from like the municipalities side of things. So from the City of London, you're a councillor and Bill 212, because the province is being a little bit overreaching right now with its, its suggestions. Do I have that right?
Or? Yeah, I think it's fair to say that the province is being overreaching on this, but I would say by a lot. And I would say that there is a history over the last, well, I'd say since 2018, for example, there's been a lot of overreaching on the part of this provincial government and, and it's a problem. I, I think that municipalities, it's, it's said that municipalities are creatures of the province, so the province can do anything, but you, you still don't go out and beat your dog. There still have to be some sort of standards in terms of respect and decency, even if we are a mere creature of the province. And I, I think that there, there have been a number of instances beyond what we can talk about today, but there've been a number of instances where planning tools that the city used to be able to employ have been taken away.
Can you name a few of those? I know it's not possible to get through all of them.
Absolutely. The city used to have the ability in its land use planning approvals to engage in what's called bonusing. And the bonusing would be where a developer wants to go above and beyond what the current regulations allow, which is very typical for the development applications now. Bonusing allows the city to increase, increase density, increase height, do, do other things in return for some public benefit. And we can get into a very long discussion about how that was administered over the years and whether there were some lost opportunities in terms of negotiating for a better, a better deal. But that would include, that would include things like putting, putting in an adjacent bike lane or a bike, a bike ramp or bicycle parking, or have some inclusion of, I don't want to say low income housing, but.
Public housing?
Less than, less than, less than the going rate. Some element of progressivity could be, could be, could be written into the land use approval. This provincial administration has taken away the power to engage in bonusing. And they've also taken away any ability for municipalities to look at inclusionary zoning. There recently was a major omnibus bill that had a lot of components to it that disrupted the city's ability to collect very needed development charges. There's a whole range of things that the province has done in the last year that have just really put municipalities in a bad, in a bad position.
And okay, so what's the benefit to the government? Why is this happening?
It's difficult for me to get inside the head of the Ford government because I think they are often motivated, and I'm just going to say this, I think they're often motivated by political vendettas against other people in Toronto. And they, they play that out, they play that out against the entire province.
Yeah, I just don't get that part. I, I get it and I don't get it because it's like, hey, I think there's over 52 cities in Ontario, along with a bunch of like towns, et cetera. But that's a lot of vendetta against those cities and all those small towns for just Toronto. I know Toronto's big, but Toronto is not Ontario. So it really hurts.
It does. And I think, I think many of us who, who work in the municipal sector really appreciate the fact that we're, we're often at the receiving end of policies that just do not make any sense in terms of our ability as a city to deliver services and to do so in an economical way with the very limited fiscal tools that, that cities have. We're relying on a very regressive property tax and that's not improving. But the Bill, Bill, Bill 212, I think it's, 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 it's important beyond cycle lanes. There's a lot in Bill 212. This is, this is just part 12 of, of Bill 212. But the, the gist of Bill 212 is the province is going to restrict, well, the province says they're going to restrict the ability of cities to put in new cycle lanes. And also that's one. And then two, review the ones that are there and potentially take them away. And so there, there, there are two parts to the bill. I want to, I want to talk about them separately. All in all, I will get into some of the text of the bill if we can do that. Be having, having a legal background. I'm very interested in analyzing the technicalities of what's in legislation. This is a poorly drafted bill. It's, it's, it's very sloppy. It just, it doesn't really get to the point of how it's going to accomplish making it easier. The stated purpose is to make it easier for people to, to get around. And in both instances, not putting in new ones and perhaps taking out old ones, the standards are very vague. And in fact, when you read the entire bill, you're left, well, what, what are they doing? Because a lot of the actual rules are going to be left to the drafting of regulations at a later point.
Which also then increases everyone's taxes. So I have actually read through the legislation as well. So there's five schedules, just for some context here. So there's five schedules. The first and last are extra things, I would, I would call them, they're smaller. Then two and three are about highway 413 and highway, building highways faster and highway expansion, which will not help anyone. We already have tons of science on that as much as, so as much as people think more lanes will help, it, it won't help. And so then finally, schedule four starts off with driver fees. And then for about one page out of the 22 pages, it covers some bikes. And I think bicycles are mentioned 10 times and highway 13, I went and through and highlighted them all. I think highway 13 is mentioned over 90 or a hundred times.
Yeah. I mean, the, the main part of this overall legislation, which I'll call omnibus legislation because it covers a lot of different areas, is not, is not about cycles. I think that's something they just decided they'd just stick in there sort of towards the end, as if nobody would notice. But of course, people have noticed because not only, not only would this, would this hurt people who actually use the cycle lanes, but it really hurts municipalities in terms of their, the authority that municipalities have under the existing very, very, very restrictive municipal act to, to supervise their own streets and highways. So if I, maybe, maybe I should just try to parse this a little bit. I said there were, there were two, there were two parts to this, to this piece of the legislation, one being restricting new ones and the second one being maybe reviewing the ones that exist. And I'm just going to refer to this because I want to get the language right.
Exactly. No, no, definitely. So right now he has his phone out, he's prepared for this and I think that's good. So don't mind if he's looking at his phone. It's important to get this right.
Yeah. So, so first restrictions on new cycle lanes. A municipality shall not construct, install or mark a bicycle lane unless the design for the bicycle lane has been approved by the ministry. Now, by including the word mark, they're not just, that doesn't just include, that's very expansive language. Marking a bicycle lane could, could be just a little, a little paint.
Sheros.
Not, not even that.
Oh, I didn't think of that.
What does, what does mark mean? It doesn't say construct as in sort of digging up the street or putting in some type of permanent infrastructure.
Oh, so I just realized it could mean the, the, a sign, like putting a sign in the ground. It's vague, right? I didn't think of that.
What does it mean to mark something? So it's, it's just, you gotta, when you're reading legislation, you have to look at every word and ask yourself, why was that put in there? Now, in considering whether or not to give that approval, the ministry may require, may require information from the municipality, including traffic information relating to the design for the bicycle lane. So that's may, doesn't mean they have to. And my, my sense here is this is going to be applied in a very sort of, I guess I'll use the word discriminatory fashion. I don't think that they have the ability to really go around to every city and require this. I'm not sure who would read it. Like when you, when you look at, when you look at Colborne, for example, the further north you go, the less infrastructure there is in the ground. And by the time you get to, by the time you're north of Oxford, it's painted. Now, the restrictions on the new bicycle lanes, and again, now I'm reading from the, from, from, from the text, the restriction on new bicycle lanes applies where the design for the bicycle lane would reduce the number of marked lanes available for travel by motor vehicle traffic. So there's a criteria that's going to be hard to determine, very hard to determine. Then there's a section that says the restriction does not apply if a contract has already been awarded for the procurement of construction, installation or marking, which doesn't make a lot of sense because in the next part of the bill, they talk about how you can take things out that have already been put in.
Retractively.
Yes. In terms of what the standards are, how do you determine whether or not? The applicable language here is travel by motor vehicle along any portion in terms of restricting that. When considering whether to approve the design for the construction of a bicycle lane, the ministry may consider, may consider whether it would unduly, unduly diminish, and here's the punchline, the orderly movement of motor vehicle traffic.
So that entire sentence is just rubbish, right? Just it's so vague?
Well, I'm, I'm sure as a scholar of statutory construction, I could think of a better word than rubbish, but yeah.
Well, what would you choose for the word? How would you describe that sentence?
It's vague.
Okay.
It's confusing. It doesn't give the reader of the legislation reasonable notice about, about what this really means. And I think good legislation should always try to do that, even if you're leaving some of the details for the regulatory process, which will happen later through a ministry. So that's, that's, that's the first part of it, restrictions on new cycle lanes.
And that's province wide, so.
Well, it's province wide if, well, here's the other catch. It's province wide, but the province would have to designate the municipality as being subject to its terms. Now, it might just be that when this passes and it passes over and this government is on to something else, like now they're on to the notwithstanding clause, which is a whole nother discussion. That's what, that's what they're on. Now, they, they may, they might not apply this to a lot of other cities other than, other than Toronto, where they've already said they're going to start ripping out lanes. Let's, let's sort of just move on to the next part of this, which is the review of existing lanes by the ministry.
Scary. Yeah. That's, again, it's just because it's in writing, it's like, sorry, go on, go on.
No, no, it is, it is very scary. And I think, I think Mayor Chow has done an excellent job because after all, this is targeted to Toronto. So it's, I think it's really fortunate that there is a sort of a.
A Chow.
An Olivia Chow, who is very, very sensitive to all forms of transit, not just, not just the car.
Which as mayor of Toronto makes so much sense. I, I just have to say like, it's a huge city, especially the core. You, you can't be driving there.
Yeah.
Like.
So, so here, here's, here's, here's the, here's the language under the second part, the review of existing bicycle lanes. And by the way, this legislation has not passed yet. It just went through second reading. It still has to go through third reading.
I thought they were going to skip second reading.
Well, there's three readings. There's always three readings for legislation. How much time there is for debate, how much time there is for offering the opposition, the ability to make amendments, whether it goes to a committee for study are all things that can be cut short. This is on a fast track. This is really on a fast track.
They want it done before the holidays.
Yeah. There's, there's, there's been, there's been two readings. The review of existing bicycle lanes. So the ministry may require a municipality to provide traffic information relating to an existing bicycle lane on a highway under its jurisdiction, on any of its streets. Any municipality shall comply with the request, which is, which is very broad. It doesn't mean they'll use it in every instance with respect to every bicycle lane in every city. I don't know if they're going to bother asking for detailed information about Cheapside or Central or Colborne or, or Wevel or any of the other streets where the addition of the bicycle lane reduced the number of marked lanes for motor vehicle traffic. So that's where, that's where this would, that's where this would apply. Now, my, my understanding of what they've done on a lot of our streets like Colborne and Cheapside is this probably wouldn't even apply because they, they, they.
They didn't reduce.
They narrowed the lanes.
Correct. Because they were parking on either side. I went back and checked Street View. It was parking, I believe. So that's where I was listening closely because now you, you're saying, hey, pay attention. I'm like, okay. And so the other one was for the movement of traffic. And now it's saying for traffic. So does that include parking theoretically? I mean, yes, you're, you're making guesses here. That's all good.
I mean, it, it's hard to try to give an interpretation of a, of a legislative measure when you've already sort of decided it's fundamentally flawed and, 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 and vague and not, not following, not following a logical progression in terms of why are they doing this? What are they doing? Under what circumstances does it apply? And what are the discernible standards that a municipality would have to undertake in order to comply with it? And I think what this does is it puts, it puts cities in a, it puts municipalities in a very bad position in that we have to guess in terms of what's going to happen. When the other shoe drops, is it going to drop on us and with respect to what, what streets? So it's troublesome. There's another part further down that, that, that says that the ministry may make regulations, interpreting this and, and implementing this. That has not happened yet. That has not happened yet. And it's, it's, it's just incredible that, that the, that the government can announce that they have already decided that they want to take out lanes when the legislation not only has not passed, but that the regulatory process has not been undertaken in order to explain what the legislation means.
And there's just, I think it was yesterday's article, it's going to be like 48 to 75 or more million to remove those bike lanes plus traffic congestion due to the construction, et cetera. So it's literally going to do the opposite.
Well, it's literally going to do the opposite, but from a public policy point of view, it really demonstrates that there is an agenda, there's an agenda here and they, I mean, the rules have not even been made yet. I was going to say the, the regulations have not been promulgated yet. And there is currently, as for any ministry regulations, there is currently a comment period going on that lasts until November 20th. I don't give that a lot of credence because I think people at the higher level have already decided what the end result is going to be. And it might be that they will just rip out a few bike lanes in visible places, blur, other places.
University, et cetera.
And then they'll just go on to something else. I, I, I don't know. There's just, there's just no way of knowing. But we, we have an administrative law system in a democracy that has standards, standards for rulemaking, standards for clarity. And I just, I just don't think any of that is being respected here.
And just moving forward, doing what they please.
It seems that, that, that seems to be right.
I do want to cover at the very end of schedule five. They do specify that, because, so they specify that a bicycle lane is something that is just meant for either cycling or cycling and pedestrians, et cetera. But if it includes any sort of two wheeledness, it, this applies to it. So like a multi-use pathway, a lot of people online were saying, oh, well, you could always have parking spots and then remove the parking spots, which would be difficult and make a cycling lane there. And then it's technically not removing a, a traffic lane, or you could widen the sidewalk. In this case, that small little sentence means no, you can't.
Well, the, the, the legislation is just shot through with ambiguities, which presumably would be cleared up by the ministry in, in the regulation process.
Okay, got it.
And then, you know, the Parliament, the Legislative Assembly can't, can't, can't be expected to legislate as to every detail. They just, they just don't have time. So there's often a delegation of, there's often a delegation to the responsible ministry.
Okay. No, that, that, I'm glad you cleared that up a little bit.
And that's, that's just a typical piece of every legislation. You could look at, you could look at any administrative body, federal, provincial, and you'll, you'll see that in addition to the enabling legislation proper, there is a whole series of regulations that are, that are not, they don't go back to Parliament. There are things that can be made, promulgated by the agency. And that, that's, that's the whole body of administrative law.
And so I wanted to go back to the municipal level for a moment. About midway, when you were going through all of the, the, reading everything, I thought of it. If it's going to be a hassle for cities and municipalities, because they don't know, they're like, well, it could just be shuttered or this, we're, we're going to try to put this in and we're going to put the effort in and it can take months, sometimes years to figure out, hey, we're going to like get all these plans done. We're going, this is what we're going to do. At least that's the plan. And then it might be shut down by the provincial level. So would it actually reduce the, the, that moving act of transportation forward?
Absolutely. And I think the, the word I want to use here would have a chilling effect.
Yes.
On, on, you know, some municipalities are already a little hesitant to engage in disturbing the mode shift, you know, creating a mode shift from motor vehicles to active transportation. And this is just one more thing on the side that is sort of like, nah, maybe, maybe you should just not do it.
Yeah, don't look into that because it's, ugh, it's too much hard headache and it's coming from the top that they don't want this, therefore we're just not going to. So I think that that from a psychological and, I mean, every other perspective might be what comes out of this too, which is not a good thing.
Yes. And I want to emphasize the term that I use, and that's mode shift, because we've given a lot of thought to that here in London, where currently the City of London has been, and we're going into the final stages of, of preparing, of preparing a mobility master plan that, that is going to govern our transportation through, through the, the, the middle of the century. So it's a, it's a long-term, it's a long-term planning document. And one of the first things that was done, and we had a city council vote on this, was setting targets for what the, 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 the new allocation between motor vehicle, and it's a part, it's impossible to say for sure, but these, these are, these are estimates in terms of the modes that, that were, that, that we're trying to achieve. And there were, there were a few options that were put forward before the city council on different, on different mode, mode shift formulas. And there were people on council who were trying to push active transportation and public transportation a little higher. And there were people on council who were trying to push the, the continued reliance on motor, you know, motor vehicles, including single passenger motor vehicles a little higher. And we ended up at a place and that's, that's the place that we're at.
Thirty-two point five.
And that, and that's, that's a decided matter of council. I would have liked to have seen it a bit higher and others. And others would have liked to have seen it a bit lower, but that's, that's, that's where it landed. And I'm really glad that the city has already gone through that entire process. Because I think if we were doing it now, um, the, the, the specter of this provincial, first of all, give us information and then we're gonna sort of undo a decision that the municipality already made. I think the specter of that would, would have made it harder to, to push, to push up the active transportation percentage of the desired mood shift in, in the future. So I'm glad that's done. The, 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 the other point I should make is it's not like cities just sort of arbitrarily throw down cycle paths without really thinking about what the implications of that are. There's a lot of planning that goes into these. And the fact that the city has engaged in such an extensive, and there are lots of public consultation, lots of deliberation, uh, went back and forth a few times. The, the fact that the city engaged in such careful consideration of this Mobility Master Plan, I think that if a city does that, they should be exempt from these regulations right at the, at the beginning. This, this legislation does not apply if the city has, within the last five years, engaged in a major transportation planning, uh, ex, ex, exercise, but it's, 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 it's not there.
With months and months of public feedback sessions as, as well. And like, I know I emailed mmp@london.ca a lot, at least CC'd in a lot of my different emails. Yeah, so Ward Councillor, and then you CC mmp-
Yeah, right.
-at london.ca, which then gets put into the Master Mobility Plan. So, yep.
Master, yeah, M, M, M.
MMP, sorry, yes. Sorry, that's not the MPP. It's MMP specifically for, uh, but yes, yeah.
Yeah. So there's been, this has not been an arbitrary process. I can't say I'm 100% happy with the results so far, but I'm happier than if we didn't do it. And I'm happier from where it started. Because some, some of the active transit and, uh, and, and public transit percentages, one of the options was very, very low. And we were able to get that taken, we were able to get that taken out. In the end, this was a very divided, uh, I think it was an eight to seven vote. It was a very divided vote in terms of where that, where that number would, would be. And, um, I, I, I worry that when this thing comes up for final approval, we're gonna adopt the entire plan. The, the provincial interference, before we talked about a chilling effect. I, I, I hope it doesn't sway some councillors to say, I don't, I don't really wanna alter the status quo much because I'm just really scared that all of our work and all of our expenses are gonna be undone.
And that's for three years from now, correct? For, is that the new council who then gets to?
No, this council is the, 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 the ultimate conclusion of this process is gonna happen next year.
Okay, so next year, I thought it was-
Oh, no, we're very close to it being finished. This council, this is gonna be on our table.
Got it. I just, I, I thought that the, one of the agreeance, it might've been like a, a motion B or whatever, was that this can be reviewed in four years?
Yeah, the next council can review it.
Got it.
And that wasn't explicit. That's something one of us, that's something that some of us wanted to put in. Those of us who may have felt that the, um, active, uh, transportation and public transportation numbers were too low. I, I, I didn't, I didn't want those locked in until 2050. So we were able to get in some flexible, uh, lan, language, which, which is, which is fine. Um, the next council would have the ability to do that. Anyway, but I wanted it to be very, very clear in what we passed so, so, so far. My, my, my worry is what's gonna happen next year? When, when this, when this comes back to the council table. And let's, let's face it. We are now in the second half of our council term. That just happened. It happened yesterday. I mean, it just, it just, it just happened this week. We're in the second half of our council term now. So people are going, and once we're into the 2025 session, people are gonna be looking to the next election and to, um, to where, where we've gone as a council. And they're gonna be, um, people are going to be very active and vocal on all sides, on, on, on all sides.
Do you think the turnout will be more than that last time? I laugh because wasn't it like 17% or something?
I, I think that the question of civic participation and what the city is doing to encourage our residents to be involved is, uh, is, is a topic for a huge discussion. I think it's been very poor and I see signs that it's getting worse. We, we, we have something coming up at, at a committee meeting talking about abolishing some of the advisory committees, making it harder for people to be able to make presentations to council meetings. That is not the direction, and of course, that, that'll be very controversial. That's not the direction we should be going. The, the city has to make it easier for people to access our, our public records, uh, to understand how agendas work, to understand what the rules are for seeking a delegation, to understand what the rules are to get an item added to the, to the agenda. We have to do a much better job of doing that. And I think that this council is very divided on that issue.
I have comments that maybe I won't say, but I, I agree with those last words. I think the council is divided. There are people who do and do not want that. They, they either want to just keep on trudging through, uh, or they do want the community consultation. And I, I think there's a balance. And I don't know what that balance is, but.
Well, um, cutting back the work of some of our, uh, the volunteers who work on our advisory committees, I think is the wrong way to go. And there are people on the city council who are adamant that that's what they wanna do.
How many are we talking? Um, as in how many committees?
If you look at the item that is on the SPPC, which is the Committee of the Whole for next Tuesday, three or four of them are, are mentioned as being abolished and they would be folded into another committee. We've already abolished the cycling.
I was gonna bring that up.
Committee, and we folded that into transportation. And now the same people wanna abolish the transportation and maybe fold it into something else, um, bigger or not, not have it. And by the way, I wanna, I wanna call out the volunteers who, who, who are on these current advisory committees with respect to the contributions that they've made, uh, to, to the Mobility Master Plan. Transportation Advisory Committee has a subcommittee that, that deals with this. They've been very, very active. And, um, some of the councillors are more interested than others in taking their advice.
So wouldn't it actually increase? This is just me guessing for the first time in my life here, so don't mind the word salad. Wouldn't it increase the burden of decision-making and having to research topics to, uh, of the councillors? Because the councillors can lean on the specialists, uh, who are volunteers, um, maybe not specialists, but, uh, part, these, these committees have volunteers and they have the time to go ahead and learn more about these topics.
Oh, sure. I mean, when you look, when you look at the rosters of these, of these committees and look at their resumes, um, you'll, you'll see that we have, we have a lot of, uh, very serious experts who for free, for free, come down and provide, uh, free consultation services for the city. And, um, you know, the city would have no hesitation to, to put out a, a consultation contract for, for, for tender. We do that all the time. And, uh, the, the idea of having, uh, citizen advisory committees that are, are vetted, everybody doesn't get to be on this. You have to be appointed by council. They're, they're, whenever there's a vacancy. But, um, we should be doing more, more. I used to serve on an advisory committee. I used to serve as a chair of an advisory committee.
Which one?
Well, I, I was the chair of the London Housing Advisory Committee from 2006 to 2010. And we don't even have the Housing Advisory Committee anymore. That was one of the committees that was, that was abolished.
So for example, what would that, like in that time that you were chair? Even if you weren't chair the whole time, were you? Or, okay. What were you able to accomplish?
Well, one of the most controversial items that the, uh, Alhac, uh, engaged in at that time was the development of the landlord rental, uh, unit licensing program, which was very controversial. That's just one. Um, but there was a constant interplay about housing standards. Anyway, um, it, it proved to be somewhat of a controversial, um, committee. But, um, it was abolished several years, several years, um, later. But I think that that committee, uh, played a very, very prominent role in, uh, the, the issues that we selectively were able to, um, take up. And I was very, very unhappy when I saw years later that it was, um, um, abolished. One of, one of the committees that's going to be-
Axed.
Yes, um, is the Animal Welfare Advisory Committee, the, the Transportation Advisory Committee. There, there were formal names for this. Um, the environmental one that Brendan Samuel's, uh, sort of chairs. And they've come forward with some very, very helpful suggestions, particularly along the yard maintenance by law controversy that we've, that we've had in terms of, um, you know, people wanting to put in alternative yards.
Alternatives to grass.
Yeah, yeah. And that's proven to be more controversial than you think it should be. By the way, throughout this entire discussion, the, the city declared a climate emergency. The last council did that. And, uh, we, we, we've since filled in with the Climate Emergency Action Plan. And, um, there is, it's increasingly being questioned whether or not the current council is, um, committed, committed to that. Cause we've not been, we've not been doing great in terms of reducing emissions.
There's a lot of fires to put out, uh, not, not hinting at environmentalism stuff right there, but it's like, council has to deal with a lot and make a lot of decisions. So it's almost like decision fatigue. And, yeah.
Advisory committees really help us a lot.
Yep.
They really help us a lot. We don't have, I mean, we have staff taking messages and answering the phone and dealing with certain levels of constituent, um, concerns. But we don't, we don't have, um, we don't have policy research going on. We, we would have to bring in our own people on, on, on a limited budget for that. So the advisory committees play a very important role. And I know when I was a member of, uh, when I was the chair of the advisory committee, there were a few councillors. I'll, I'll name them. Susan Eagle, Gina Barber, Joni Beckler. I mean, Nancy Branscombe. And they were very, very happy that there were people who were serving on the advisory committees with expertise that can help them with their policy development and, um, and research. And at the, on the other hand, it's starting to rain now. On the other hand, uh, there's always been pushback. There's, there's always been, and there's, there's been a tension. There's been, there's been a tension between having these people come into City Hall and, and sit down and take up staff time, take up a conference room and be part of a decision-making process.
So that's actually, so I was on the positive there, asking about that. But now, what are the negatives to that? And you're saying they take up time or during the meetings, they do, they take up time? Like, what, what's the, the negatives of the committees?
The negatives of the committees is, um, they're attended by a member of the city clerk's office. So that, that is, uh, that, that, that takes staff time. And, uh, there was a time when they were just all online and now they're blended. So there's, there's that infrastructure. There's, there's getting the conference room. They, they have to, the clerk has to type up a report. So, uh, an advisory committee will have a standing committee of council that it reports to. So there's an item on the council standing committee agenda each, 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 each time they, they, they send us a report. So there's certain administrative, um, over, overhead things. The question really, and if people wanna get into a review of the advisory committees, we should probably have a long discussion about this at the Governance Working Group, which has been set up. And we should invite in the, the chair and other, and other members of advisory committees to talk to us about if, if we have a problem with the need to streamline their committees, let's talk about what we can do. But to, to just put on the next week's council agenda without, without even contacting the, uh, the, the members of the committees, much less just the chair, um, I think is a little excessive. And there will be an attempt to defer that motion.
I, I think at least deferring would be good.
Well, I, I, I worry, I worry about the voting box on this, on this council and how that's going to, um, turn out. So this is the SPPC meeting on Tuesday. We have a lot of other things on, on the agenda. This is sort of right, right there at the-
You know the number?
Yeah, I think it's 4.5.
Okay. And what date was that?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, November?
Tuesday, next Tuesday.
Okay.
Tuesday, November, what is it, 20th?
I think so. We'll, we'll go with that. Something around there.
But, um, people, people should know that when there's a, when there, when there's a standing committee, planning, uh, Community Protective Services, SPPC, you can always send in a submission, a written submission, uh, by nine o'clock the day before the, the, the meeting. And it goes to a different email depending on the committee. This would be sppc@london.ca by nine o'clock the day before the meeting. And, uh, you, you can, you can ask for delegation status, which you may or may not get.
And for those who don't know what that is?
Uh, speaking.
Yep.
Speaking to the, you never can speak to council, but you can always, uh, ask for permission to speak at a, um, at a standing committee.
Except for the public participation meetings, correct?
Except that, yes. If it's a public participation meeting, you just show up and, uh, speak or you let the clerk know that you need to, that you need to phone in or, or zoom in. Typical, typical non-public participation meetings, you, you can't just show up and raise your hand and say, I wanna speak. But you, you, if you put it on the agenda ahead of time and seek delegation status, you, you can do that.
And you would do that through that sppc@london.ca as well?
Yes, or, or PEC at, depending on the, depending, depending on the committee.
Got it.
And you have to sort of, um, yeah, everything has to be done according to the rules. You have to state that you, you, you grant consent for it to be on the calendar and you have to use the right words. And you have to, you have to identify which item on the agenda. You just can't say, I wanna show up and talk at this meeting, open mic. You have to say what item it's, it's, it's about.
For sure. Yep. I, uh, I did show up at one point and talked for the wrong item by accident. Whoops.
Yeah, I remember, I remembered that, but it was, it was okay. I think the chair was very forgiving and, uh, it was, it was, it was, what you were talking about was close enough. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it had broader implications, but yes, I used very specific words and street names. And he's like, I, I feel like, you're talking about a different item. And yes, that was it. So. But at least trying and showing up, I think, as much as that's a blunder on my part, oh, oh, well, I still was very happy to at least have said it.
It was very related. It was very related. And everybody knew that you were talking about the next item on the agenda that was related anyway. So it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't a big problem. But I think we should be doing more to encourage, um, residents to come out to these meetings and participate. I, I just look out in the gallery sometimes and I'm just like, I know people are watching online. And that's part of it. But I, I, I wanna see more active public participation. As a councillor, I need, I, I just need to have that.
And what does that do for you as a councillor?
As a councillor, it gives me the impression that there are people out there besides just the regular lobbyists who are there for, for usually a planning, uh, persist, persistently, that there are other people in this community who care about what the council is doing and are watching what the council is doing and presumably may hold us accountable, accountable at some point.
Accountable. I like that.
Accountable. The council should be accountable. Yeah.
All right.
So we're getting, we're getting beyond the, uh, cycle thing, but I think these are important, um, points that are very much, that are very much related. I would like to see the city pass a strong resolution basically saying that this is an overreach and this is, this is something we should do. There's a hesitancy on the part of some councillors to, um, annoy the province. And quite frankly, unfortunately, I think there are quite a few councillors who would fundamentally this, this disagree with what I'm saying and would, would, would like, like what Ford is doing. And I wanna be clear about something. The installation of the cycling paths on streets in London has proven somewhat controversial in that, in that there, there, there always is some concern, some pushback about what that's gonna mean for the street. And I, I, I think our staff has done a really good job taking those concerns into, in, in, into, uh, effect. Nobody's going to be 100% happy. And at, at the same time, you've got people saying, well, take, take Colborne, for example. Once you, once you go north of Cheapside, it's not protected. Even if it's just the line, that doesn't really protect anybody. Whereas when you're south of Oxford, you really feel protected if you're, I, I cycle south of Oxford. You know, on, on Colborne and on Cheapside, and on Cheapside, which is really nice, the way they've incorporated that into the, the boulevard.
Yeah, the Inboulevard Cycling Facilities, I believe is what that is called, to the west of Colborne on Cheapside. And yeah, it's nice. Oh, just, just, this is me talking to my councillor. Okay, not my councillor, a councillor.
A Jason councillor, yeah.
Yes. But the transitions, I would love if we could smooth those somehow. And that has to be put into like what the contractors do. And I know there's drainage concerns, et cetera. But certain new ones do have them smooth. But I don't know if you experienced this, but like when you are going along, pedaling along and then duh, duh, and then duh, duh.
Oh, if you're pedaling along Windermere or if you're pedaling, uh, along Sarnia in, in towards campus or up Western Road, they just stop. If you're pedaling along Windermere or if you're pedaling along Sarnia in, in towards Campus or up Western Road, they just stop.
Yeah, there's always.
That's what the design was because they just did that piece and now those are being filled in. But I think thought has to be given to curb cuts.
Yes.
At least, at least small curb cuts, maybe not big enough for a car, just as a safety factor. Because if, if you're, if you're cycling along and you're really being menaced by an oncoming vehicle or there's some other thing going on, you want to be able to get off that road.
Which the fact that that's even a concern is what I would call car brain. I know that hasn't been brought up, but that's just like, they have a lane that is out of your way. What more do you want from a driver's perspective? It's like, hey, like, don't be, don't be nasty to other road users. I, I just want to put, like, put that out.
I, I think most motorists in London are courteous and are not nasty. The other road units, it's just, there are enough who aren't that you notice it.
Yes.
So 50 cars might have just passed you.
Not one.
With a lot of courtesy and it's, it's, it's the, it's the one who seems to be bothered by the fact that.
You exist.
You exist and that you're on the road. And those, those, I don't like to make generalizations, but it tends to be men in larger pickup trucks.
Often lifted.
Well, you know, I, I don't want to, I don't want to go too far. They're, they're not all carrying the Trudeau banners.
You didn't say anything. I, I, I get to say the things and then you're like, yeah, yeah.
I've been, I've been menaced on my, I have my, I have my bike here. I do not consider myself to be an expert cyclist, but I'm, I'm comfortable enough on it now that I can go downtown, I can go to campus. I can, I can do a lot of my, some of my day-to-day errands. I'd like, I'd like to get better at it. I recently had somewhat of a spill. I was just really glad that I was wearing my helmet. But there are enough motorists on the road who I, I think just resent seeing, seeing, seeing the cyclists. And a lot of them are using the University Bridge.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know. Well, that's, that's a, it's a famous cut through.
I have my closing ask, which is about your bike. But did you have anything else? Cause we're, we're getting into about the time limit. It's starting to rain a little bit. We're getting fairly moist and my equipment's getting moist. However, did you want to say anything else, whether it be about like municipal stuff or councillors are showing up or bill two and two, et cetera, et cetera, or?
As someone who could be characterized as a senior, I think I've earned that, I'm over 70. I think many more people in my age group would, would be cycling if they thought it was safe. Especially, especially now with, with the, with the availability of that. A little bit of additional juice that you can get when you have that small battery there. It, it, it really makes it a lot easier. I would not be able to cycle downtown or, 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 or back without doing a lot of work. And if, it, it just makes it a lot easier to, to get around. And certainly in addition to seniors, I, I see families now. I see more and more families out in larger, large, larger bikes, which you have there.
Yes.
And, and larger with, with, with groceries, with children. It's just, it's just, it's just great to see that. So I, I, I want London to have a network where you can get around, not just to commute. Well, to commute, but also for recreation that is, that is accessible and available and safe to all ages and all levels of expertise on the cycle. Cycling is not just for really good cyclists.
Yeah, the spandex clad mammals. So like male, middle-aged men in Lycra is the, the mammal is the term.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't gone for, I, I have, I have my bike here, but I haven't gone for Lycra yet. I think I'm gonna.
I don't think, I don't have any actually. I, I just wear normal clothes. And just for the audio listeners, I'll describe the bike. Actually, you can't quite see it on camera either. But it's a, a nice 36 volt, looks like Paris is the brand. And it's an upright Dutch styled bike, I would call it. Yes?
Yes, it's, it's a unisex bike. So you can, you can put your leg through there without having to lift it up over, over, over bar. And I, I find it very comfortable and I just love driving it. Yeah.
So Natalia and I, my wife, we call it reducing friction points. Where it's like, would you go downtown on your bike to City Hall and do you commute with it too or?
Yeah, I take it to City Hall.
Awesome. And so.
And thereabouts. Yeah.
Okay. Would you do that on a normal bicycle?
I could, but it would, I would have to really work, if I really worked at it. And I think, I think the more, I mean, even on the e-bike, you're still pedaling.
Exactly.
You're still, you're still doing some, you're still doing some work. You're getting exercise. And you're just not limited to how far you can, how far you can go. And the more, the more I cycle, the more, the more I feel I'm able to do more and have more stamina. And like, like a lot, like a lot of people my age or, or even younger, staying in shape is something we need to spend more time worrying about. But cycling is something that's really helped me a lot in terms of my health.
Yeah, like you're already, even if it takes slightly less time or actually we find it more convenient because you get to not have to sit in traffic, you have more, have a higher average speed than sitting in stop and go traffic in a car. But you're using that time to exercise rather than sit in traffic or sit. Okay, let's say you have a clear road. You're still sitting down in a chair with four wheels. But with the biking, it just allows you to get that exercise, whether it's minimal or not, you can decide with the e-bike.
I can, when I, when I, when I cycle from where I live here near King's College down to City Hall, I'm going through my ward. I'm seeing people, I'm seeing what's going on on people's lawns. Sometimes I'll take a slightly different street, so I'm not going down Waterloo or Colborne. I like Colborne a lot more because it's a, it's a smoother, it's a smoother street with fewer potholes and it's, it's, it's more protected. But I like to take different routes. And you, you just, you just notice a lot of things on the ground that you just don't notice when you're in an automobile.
Yeah, like a, a human scale rather than flying past everything.
Very human scale. And if there's something that seems off, you, you, you see that. But you're also more likely to encounter neighbors.
Exactly. They can see you, you can see them and you can just pull over and stop and say hi.
That's, that's true. And sometimes that takes a while. And that's, that's actually, that's actually great. I really, I really like that aspect of meeting people. And I only get to do that on this side of the ward. There's a whole nother side of the ward over there. And who knows what the wards are going to look like after we do this, this ward reconfiguration next year. Yeah.
I saw a few posts, there's a few different configurations. We don't have to go into this for this. Has that been decided on which configuration?
No, no, we're, we're still in, we're still in an initial stage. The consultants have prepared four maps for us. Now, it's not going to be map one, two, three or four. It could be some combination, could be something totally different. But in my opinion, one of the maps is, is, is much better. One of them is much worse and two of them have problems that could be tweaked.
Okay, sounds good. So I'm, I'm gonna look into that. I initially looked at it and then life.
Well, we can have another discussion. We could put the maps in, 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 in back and we could have a whole discussion about, about that. And I, I hope you do, because this is going to become, I think, once we get into the next stage and maybe we're presented with a few maps again, people are going to start really looking at it, maybe more than they have so far.
Yep. Okay. Oh, wait, hold up. I had one more thing. So.
No, as long, as long as you're.
I always give myself more work. These are supposed to be 30 minutes. We're at like an hour.
Well, you can, you can just save some of this footage for another one too.
Exactly. Yeah. My thinking with these is that I'm already, I, I take the time to come here. You take the time to come here. We take the time. And then it's like, okay, well, we're set up too. I might as well make it slightly longer. So there's that. Final little bit I wanted to ask, and usually I start with this, but for your cycling journey. So like you mentioned that you got back into riding a bicycle. And what was your experience? Did you ride a kid, or did you ride a bike as a kid? And then you stopped?
And I went to college.
And then that's when you stopped?
Yeah.
Okay. And then how recently did you start again?
Oh, it's been five, it's been, by now it's been five, 10, 10 years. And I started out with a manual bike that was not in great shape. And I, I wasn't doing that well on it, but I could go through Ross Park, you know? And then I realized if I wanted to be able to add any kind of serious covering more, more area, I should probably look at any bike. And I did that. This is an entry level. E-bike, I think at some point I might want to move up to something with a little bit more. I don't know if those are, I don't know if those are visible on.
I'll, I'll put it, but it's the Turn GSD that he's pointing at that is a cargo bike. And it is now replacing a trailer that I usually hauled all my gear with. Now I can put all my gear on the back of this. So it's, it's pretty good. But there's smaller ones too. And, or yeah, you don't need the excessive cargo or maybe that's what you want, but.
Well, I think if I had more cargo, which I could, which I could add to, if I got the proper bags, I could do more food shopping. And it's interesting that some of the stories you go into are, you know, don't even think of bringing the bike in here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Don't even think of bringing your dog in here. And others are very friendly. Are like, yeah, just bring the bike and just put it over there. And I, all else being equal, I will tend to shop there. The other thing I noticed a lot, and this goes to infrastructure, is it's frustrating to go someplace and not see a bicycle rack. So you have to sort of try to, try to put your bike on a pole or something. And also from time to time, I feel I would like to have maybe, maybe a little bit of electricity or a little bit of air. And I'd like, I'd like to see that infrastructure built up a lot.
Yeah. At end of trips, I think they're actually formally called like EOTs. But end of trip, so if you're at a commute, you commute, you get to work and then end of trip, what's your experience like? Or today, you have a little bit of less air than ideal in the back tire of your bike. And I kind of noticed that. And now we're like, okay, now what? And I don't know if there's a pump around. There are like at City Hall and other places around the city. It's very nice.
Not, not, not enough. And I, I think I made the comment that in front of the Student Union Building, they actually have a charging station for the, for the car. And as long as that infrastructure is there, they could probably give you a pump air. And I know that's, that's another hookup, but they've already got the electricity there. And sometimes I'm running low. This is not the best battery in, in, that I could buy. And sometimes I find I'm getting down to the, to the bottom and I'd like to, I'd like to boost it. And I could do that at home. I could do it in the office, but it's really hard to find some place in between where you can stop for a while.
Yeah.
Ideally, I'd like to see these all along the, the parkway.
Yeah, no, they're wonderful. When they exist, at least the, the tire ones, the electrical doesn't exist. So, yeah.
Yeah, but there are a lot of, there are, are a lot of posts with electricity for other things and they are, they are there. So I would not be asking the city or a merchant to, you know, install a new electrical system. But sometimes they're, sometimes they're there and it's just a question of making somebody. Well, letting, letting somebody know that they should feel comfortable sitting there for half an hour if they need, if they need to. Yeah.
I was going off of the, wrapping it all up with the marking, which is in the legislation, which is ambiguous enough to mean anything. You can mark it as, hey, you can charge something here. Yeah.
Well, you mark it and you know, I, I could, I could get a paintbrush and some paint and mark something. So I could get chalk and mark something.
There we go. Well, now we know kind of how you got back into it, why it's important. We covered a lot of different topics. So I guess, thank you very much for sitting down with me and for the last 30 minutes dealing with sitting in the rain.
No, no, it's, it's, it was a very nice day and it was, it is getting a little, a little rainier. I don't, I don't know if we're going to be able to take much of a, a trip now. We could do that at another time when it's, when it's, when it's sunny. But I really have been enjoying your podcasts.
Yes, thank you so much.
I did, I did contact him and say, I want to be on your podcast. So yeah.
Thank you for reaching out.
Appreciate it. Yeah.
I think it's supposed to be sunny tomorrow. So maybe, I don't know what you're doing, but maybe I can come back and we can do the ride along in the sun.
That would be, that would be, that would be nice. I'll, I'll, I'll check my calendar before.
For sure.
Before, before we, before we leave. And yeah, you see my phone is getting.
Wet. Yep. Okay.
This is such, this is such a pleasant place to sit. The other thing I want to mention is there is a shuttle. There is a free shuttle service. It stops right here in back of this building.
Which building?
This is the.
That's the student center.
That's the student center. I don't have the name, Bessie Labatt Building.
Okay, we'll go with that.
But it's, it's, it's right, it's right across the street. It's on Epworth. Just, just the main entrance to King's College.
Yeah. What's that intersection actually? That is Waterloo and?
That's Waterloo. Waterloo ends and turns into Epworth.
There we go.
Epworth ends, well, Epworth, Epworth ends at Richmond, but it also turns into Meadowdown.
Okay, so a lot of changing.
Yeah. But in any event, you, you can get on the shuttle. This would service a lot of people in, in, in Old North. It's, it's free. They don't look for, for IDs. There's, there's an ample schedule. They, they, they run up to campus. They, they, they go down Western Road and they, they, they come back. They have one that runs at night.
Really?
For like 11 o'clock. Yeah. Monday through Thursday, really good service. It gets abbreviated Friday afternoon. It's a free service. Kings and Brescia have paid for it for years. Brescia is gone now. Now they call it the King's Western Shuttle. But I, I think the campus needs more shuttles. And I think one of the ways the campus could be alleviating the traffic is maybe, maybe having more, some more remote lots combined with free shuttles.
Yeah. I like that idea because there are people who, okay, for all, all the, if you've watched this far, you're probably not this person. However, there's people who always say, oh, well, I need to drive. That's perfectly acceptable. I was at campus last, last week, I had to bring a bunch of camera gear. My car was jam packed. I was very tempted to try biking it all over. That would have been somewhat excessive. I need a front loading cargo bike for that, which would make it work. But either way, I had to drive to campus because of what I have. And it was difficult. And here I am, like I, I see all these single occupancy vehicles of people and students and everyone else, faculty, et cetera, driving. And I'm like, what? And they're circling the parking lot looking for, I, I know there's a lot more parking lots, but everyone's circling, looking for a spot. And it's like, guys, guys, what, what are you doing?
Oh, you should just go down Waterloo, right, right south of here in, in, in the morning. That one block between Epworth, King's College and, and here on, on Waterloo. People are just begging crazy U-turns. If there's a parking space, it's like zip. And it's sort of like, same thing out here on Epworth. Lot of really dangerous U-turns. Yeah. Anyway.
Yeah, I know. I mean, it, it's just less, when it takes quote, less time, but you have to do that and hunt for a parking spot and that's your worry at the end of the day, or at the end of your drive? Is it really worth it? Even on days like this, when it's raining, we both biked out here. It's not the end of the world. Yesterday, slightly more rain. But again, doesn't have to be an all or nothing thing. Anyways, yeah, those, those are my thoughts.
Well, you've got, you've got a hood, you've got a, you've got a raincoat, so it's, you'll be okay. And I'm, I'm just around the corner. There's the shuttle.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah.
So, okay, so that goes from here and it's free and.
Goes down Waterloo, it turns on Huron, it goes up Richmond, goes through the campus gates. It'll go over to the medical, the medical building. It'll turn back down on Richmond, past Huron and the Brescia buildings. It'll, it'll, it'll go, it'll go up past the law school and the engineering school, the FIMs nursing building. And it'll, it'll just come back. It'll just come back here.
Wow. Okay. I did not know that. I'm gonna have to look for this online to see what they're doing to advertise that. Cause I don't know what their utilization rate is, but that would be.
If it's, if it's in the morning and if it's inclement, it'll be packed. And a lot of other times it's, it's not. And I still see people getting on who show their ID, who don't realize it's just a, it's just a free shuttle. And I do post things on the Old North list from time to time, reminding people that that shuttle is, is, is if you're in Old North and you can get yourself up to King's, it's, it's just a great way to get to campus.
Yeah, that's awesome. And I, I had not known about that. So that's, that's really cool. So, all right. Well, with that, thank you very much for stopping by, Sam. To this bench that is now as wet as it was when we dried it off.
We did dry off this bench, I guess about an hour ago.
Yeah. All right.
Okay, take care.
This is that. All right. Bye.